You're watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 30th meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access laporte county dot org.
Order, if everybody please silence or phone and stand for the pledge. Mr. Cunningham, one more time.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands, one nation, where under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we should have done a moment of silence for Mr. Carter. President Carter, so if everybody please take a second for passed away at 100 years old. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
President.
Councilman Yagelski.
President.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
And Councilman Molinar.
Present.
Everyone's here.
Approval of the agenda for tonight?
Mr. President, I provide motion of approval pending the following items. Under all businesses, talk about home rebound and their requests with matching funds from other municipalities. We are going to add under new business, item 1D, La Porte County Parks Department request for replacement maintenance technician. Item, we'll go back to that in a minute. We are going to take, then take La Porte County Courts. Under appropriations, transfers, and requests, move that to between the requests from the La Porte County Circuit Court and La Porte County Auditor. Then in between the two groups of, from the La Porte County Auditor, that being between $843.47 and the $2 million plus the $650,000, we're going to take item 5 under new business and move that between them. And this is just in order to group all of the ARP requests together. And that completes my motion.
Please say it.
Alright.
Motion by Mr. Krunkas, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions, additions, or?
I would perhaps suggest that we move the discussion, there's two discussions about salaries or creation of a new position and then a salary increase. It may be helpful to do those at the same time that we do the salary ordinance, just because they're kind of incorporated with that.
So you want to bump those up?
Yeah.
Under the salary ordinance?
Um, I mean, they should be incorporated into the salary ordinance.
Would you? Well, they. So ladies should do it before, before you adopt the salary ordinance?
Yeah.
Or how about if we do the salary ordinance right after we do those two items?
That's easier, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll agree in a second.
I'm sure that everybody in the audience knows exactly what's going on now, so. Is there any other questions or comments?
We good?
We're good.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the December 5th, 2024 workshop.
Motion approved.
Motion by Karanka.
Second.
Second by Keel. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. State your name, sir.
Steve Hollifield, 6782H100 South Mill Creek. Over the years of coming up here, I noticed not less eye rolling when I come up here to speak. I don't know if that's good or bad. Mr. Cunningham, I would like to say thank you for your service and the years of advice you've given me over the time. You've always asked for my calls and returned questions and answer for me, appreciate that. Mr. Rosenbaum, thank you and good luck in your new position. Hopefully we move the county forward and to the new people that are working coming to starting next month. Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressel, I'm looking forward to them as a new commissioner to work together with you guys across the tables, across the lines. Let's get this county moving forward again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other public comments?
I'm going to go up during public comment.
Come up there, keep talking to her.
State your name.
Public comment, Tim Stabos, County Auditor in 1501 Michigan Avenue. This is a repeat of the county commission meeting, but I wanted to also say it here to make sure everyone had heard it. Good evening, La Porte County Auditor, Tim Stabos, as this will be my last council meeting as auditor with my four-year term ending at the stroke of midnight tomorrow. That's a flare for drama. I wanted to publicly thank the citizens of La Porte County for what has been the honor of a lifetime. The opportunity to protect you, protect taxpayer dollars, support the executive and fiscal bodies in their function, keep the system honest, hold public figures accountable, be accountable, and open the blinds and shine sunlight on things when necessary. I also want to thank my staff. It's an amazing thing to be the only man in a staff of 14 women, but I've learned so much. I've learned what a tremendous honor it is to be in such an arrangement. I've learned that solid hiring is everything. I've learned how to build and support a team. I've learned about trusting and believing in your people. I've learned about bringing out the best in them, empowering them, and not micromanaging them. And I've learned about the magic that happens when you establish a family environment in an office, when people truly care about one another and about taking care of the people of La Porte County. I love my staff and I salute them. And I must say, I was very heartened to hear incoming auditor Mike Rosenbaum tell me a couple Fridays back as we were discussing the transition that he intends to retain all the staff as he recognizes the positive dynamic and healthy environment we've created. Thank you, Mike. Finally, while she couldn't be here tonight, I want to thank the unsung hero of the La Porte County Auditor's Office, my chief deputy, Rhonda Graves. It's important for me to convey to you that Rhonda has not been given the credit she deserves. Rhonda is a workhorse. Getting it right and according to the law and the accounting regs has always been the most important thing to her and an auditor couldn't ask for anything more than a chief deputy. If my job was primarily to be a support figure, Rhonda's was to ensure that everything got done and to give the team ongoing day-to-day direction and support. She also loved helping and facilitating department heads. Rhonda is one of the hardest-working people I've known and incredibly caring and compassionate person and someone who loves people. Rhonda, thank you for everything you've done and everything you've put up with, especially from select public officials who thought that degrading you, me, or our office was more fun than appreciating and supporting you in your function. In closing, I wish everyone happy holidays and peace in the new year. Thank you and God save La Porte County.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Connie Grammer Rosa, 335 Lake Hills Road. I'm up here as a citizen, I just, and becoming a politician, I'd like to really thank Earl Cunningham. You know, I served on the council, I served on the commission and really having you with the knowledge that you have and the ability, not just to have your knowledge, but to share it. You know, giving us the guidance, always answering the phone calls and you really helped me out and I just, I wanted to say thank you. I don't think that the county really knows how important it is, someone like you with all the knowledge that you have and I greatly appreciate the knowledge that you've shared with me.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rosenbaum, I'd just like to thank you. I served with you on the council and I've served on the commission and I've worked with you while you were on the council and you've done a lot of good things and I greatly appreciate you working with us diligently. And I look forward to you moving up to the auditor's office and doing a great job there as well. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody from the public? Public comment is now closed. Moving on to department head reports. Any department heads?
Thank you, Mr. President, Matt Reardon, Office of Economic Development. Just wanted to thank the council for utilization of the ARP funds. I know the communities are excited about it and just to snap that. Your use of, judicial use of those ARP funds in those communities is going to allow for the development of 1,000 plus or minus more residential lots that will be served with municipal water and sewer at their choice. And another caveat or benefit from that is that down in Wantita is going to have a, save the ratepayers 14% by your financial participation in that. Your attorney prepared the requisite intergovernmental agreements that were executed. I know that President Novak took care of those and they're signed. They're also signed by and reviewed by the community, so thanks. And Earl, it's been a lot of fun working with you, 18 years or so. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
County Auditor, Tim Stabos. I want to comment on item number two on your agenda. There's a proposal to have a, under new business, a second deputy, insurance deputy in the auditor's office. I was very disappointed that our office was not consulted in the least about this. We've been talking about this behind the scenes about the potential need for a full-time person, but we feel that we should have been a part of this discussion. My chief deputy has been speaking with a number of people here around the nature of this need. We knew better than anyone about the nature of this need and yet we were not consulted at all. We were left out of the process. We would recommend that this item be tabled and studied more. I have grave concerns that the nature of assigning this to, as a comment six will create morale issues in the auditor's office around comment fives. It was not, this description, this job description is quite frankly threadbare in its detail and I think that this could be rushed through. I would hate to think that and it feels to me like there's somehow politics involved, but you know, maybe that's not true. But I think you're going to create a major problem with the comment fives in that office where something that is suggestive of the comment six that has supervisory responsibilities when we don't believe it should. We're just very disappointed that we were not consulted in this matter at all and that that was not appropriate.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, department heads?
Yes, I would like to request a transfer. From voter, Kristen Zabel from voter registration.
Yes, go ahead, Kristen.
Hi, we would like to transfer the money. We had asked to move money from our account to pay the part-time people and we didn't hire anybody at that time, so we would like to transfer that money back and that would be transferring from a 200 account to a 100 account.
It would be, wouldn't you be reversing it? It'd be from a 100 to a 200? This, this time?
Okay, it's only, it's not the same amount, so they weren't sure if it could be an actual transfer with it being a different amount, it's not the full amount.
What is the amount?
It was 1,500 that we transferred and we're only requesting 944.25 to be put back. That's the difference of what we use to pay our part-time people.
I would vote to have 944 and change put back?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion by Karanka, second by Keel to approve the transfer of.
Nine, was it 924 and 25 cents?
944.25.
To go back.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion?
Self of what, sir?
I just asked you, which is the discussion?
See if there's any other questions. You're not there yet.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Somebody on Zoom? Liaison reports?
Mr. Molinar?
Help us.
Mr. Keel?
Mr. Rosenbaum?
I'm passing.
Mr. Yagelski?
Yeah, it was a, I don't know, how many years ago was it when you first became elected for them? Either way, I was at, I was at a print shop there when Mr. Cunningham came in. We had talked about his running for office and I was very pleased at the time that he told me he was going to run. I've enjoyed him over the years, him and I, being able to debate back and forth and talk back and forth. And I, some of the new people coming in, vote no with me because my no vote's going to go away after, after this last meeting, so. Sorry, guys. But no, Mr. Cunningham, I appreciate working with you. You've been a strong advocate and we bounce ideas off each other and even, you've been good for La Porte County. I really appreciate working with you. Mr. Cunningham? And I'll save mine to the end of the meeting. Thank you. Correspondents?
There's none.
We moved the ordinance and resolution to the next page, so we're going to go down to old business. Consider setting pay for unclassified HR assistant position, $53,458. This is something, we already approved the position, we just needed to assign the salary. And you guys had seen some information that was sent out by HR director for a while, so what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Molinar. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
That one needs to be added to the salary.
Next item is home rebound modification of agreement. This is, they originally came before us for $100,000. We gave them 50 and then they came back to the second 50. So it's $100,000 total, but they were to get a match from Michigan City on that. They got $50,000 from Michigan City, but they didn't have other sources to get the remaining amount and they exceeded that. And I'm looking at Guy, I don't know if you, something you want to add to the agreement guy?
That wasn't really clear. See how, when they came before y'all, the last thing that you did is you said that you would obligate up to $100,000, but you would match Michigan City. Michigan City obligated $50,000 towards the project. Homer Bound is still asking y'all to consider the $100,000 obligation. They went out to other sources and they got additional funds. They got a $300,000 grant from Lilly. They got $230,000 to support the project from the Health Foundation. They received a $200,000 low interest loan from an anonymous donor who's going to actually pay back $20,000 a year of that loan for 10 years. So it's actually going to be a gift to them minus the interest. So that's what you all have before you. I did amend the agreement, should you all decide to go ahead and obligate the $100,000. But as the prior agreement says, you were going to obligate up to $100,000 based on what Michigan City did. And so currently, your obligation is $50,000, even though on our books, we've showed up to $100,000. Do you have any questions of me?
I thought that's exactly the way I said it.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I don't, just saying, Mr. Novak.
Well, it's the way I heard it, so, anyway.
Does anybody have any questions on that? What's your pleasure?
So looking for a motion to increase it to the $100,000?
No, it is $100,000 to approve the new agreement.
To approve the new agreement, so I make a motion?
No, I have to, it's to modify the agreement. Changing the terms of the agreement.
Modify the agreement.
To modify the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Sir, second?
Second, I'll assume the discussion.
I'll second it.
So, do we, does anybody have their notes in terms of what the final figure was that they're trying to earn?
Oh yeah, it was like three, $4 million to build, to build a project.
Okay.
And, yeah, so.
So this, this amount is not going to go take them over and above to where they're staying on surplus cash? This is just what I wanted to.
Correct, correct, absolutely not. They're going to have to get some low interest financing.
Yep.
It's also my recollection that they could only use it not for operating, but use it only for the infrastructure.
Yeah.
So that was what the purpose of our ones were.
Perfect. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Roll call.
You want a roll call?
Please.
Yeah.
Please.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagelski?
Aye.
Molinar.
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilman Novak?
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka?
Aye.
Bye-byes, tunays.
Mr. Novak, you have the agreement if you can get it signed by tomorrow.
I will. It's just these two are a little bit more boisterous tonight. They got a little spunk in their step.
Mr. Keel's a little, he's got a problem.
Right. These guys are like singing in harmony down here now, so.
It's our last round, eh?
Alright, moving on to new business. Consider approval of the council president's authorization to hire replacement positions. We got the La Porte County Prosecutor, victim's advocate, La Porte County Animal Shelter Assistant Director, La Porte County Health Department Director of Nursing and Park Department of Maintenance Tech. Those are the four.
Motion to approve.
All four?
All four at once.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second with question.
Second by Mr. Krunkas.
So I'd be the assistant director for the animal shelter. Did he, did they leave or did they get promoted?
They never had a director, a assistant director.
They didn't have assistant director, so this is a new position?
No, no, the one that was there is gone.
Okay.
Right. So.
It's a vacant.
Right. Correct, it was vacant, yes.
I thought you meant the new one that came in, because the new director, okay, alright.
We placed the over.
Seeing if there was more change over there.
A little. Who the new director was.
Any other questions or comment on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is consider creating a new full-time position in the auditor's position, deputy insurance. They're asking for a comment five, four, I mean, six. Say that again. Comment six is what the Personnel Review Committee determined. But it's up to us to set that, so. Please state your name.
I'm Joey Winsky, I'm the current treasurer and the future chief deputy auditor. And I'm speaking to you today as the future chief deputy auditor. But to begin with, I will speak to you as the treasurer. Since the end of May, beginning of June, I think it was, that several of us have met to try to get a hold on our insurance problems, our health insurance problems specifically. As you all know, there, there were at least twice this year we were overdrawn in our account. So one of the suggestions that we came up with out of these meetings was to have a full-time person, the insurance maybe coordinator, I guess, to work with HR, to work with the insurance companies, providers, to work with the treasurer and the auditor to get a handle on this and see why this is happening and what we need to do to fix this problem. So this is the result of several of us talking back and forth and I am here before you asking for this position, which will be under the auditor.
Mr. Yagelski?
I didn't know that we were going to comment before going to ask for a motion, okay. Two things. One, Mr. Stables, and I agree 100% that as a classification to six, I think it's an insult to a lot of departments. How that happened to get that six. By talking fat, we barely made that six, but I think it's an insult to most departments to even consider it as a six. Second of all, this has always been a commissioner's position. If, if the commissioners are going to give up some of their authority with this position, I'm okay with that. The commissioners, I'm surprised that Mr. Stables is looking funny on this. The insurance part has always been a commissioner's area. And I'm surprised.
If I may, Mr. Yagelski?
Let me, I'll run, I'm in the meeting.
So. Not yet. That's what I thought. So I'm, I hope that, that we, that we're going to, if we're going to work hand-in-hand with commissioners on the insurance, I'd be okay with that, but. It is surprising that, so. Both of it, both of us do.
Well, I, I don't think we're giving up, Connie Grammer Rosa, La Porte County Commission. We're not giving up that, the insurance itself. I mean, we're still overseeing it, we're still going to the insurance meetings, we still have a handle of what's going on. The problem that we're having is, and this individual was classified as a six because it's not just a clerk position, this would, she would be functioning like a first deputy. This person would have to do a lot of independent work. What they need to do is they need to be able to bring in the individuals, know what they're signing up for, making sure that they're, they're signing up for the right things and overseeing pretty much with the two payroll. And I'm, I'm not going to get into the two payroll clerks and I'm not going to get into like a a big issue about this, but I mean, there has been errors done in the last couple of years in payroll. And so I don't think that this is something that's easily corrected because what happens is there are so many funds in the commissioner's budget and whether it was workman's comp, whether it was the insurance, it was, we've been pulling out of different pools and this one individual would have the ability to actually be trained and taught which accounts are what and go ahead and pull out of the right pools and make sure that we can finally start budgeting and getting the balances under control and we don't have that under control right now.
Again, I, I think that would be an insult to most departments, making this a six. I definitely agree with Mr. Stables on this position, but.
If I could just say one thing, if you're going to give authority to the auditor's office around the numbers, then you probably also want to, and we, we're not included in these discussions around this position. If you're going to ascribe this responsibility to the auditor's office, then you also need to actually put the health insurance budget, as we talked about during the budget cycle, under the auditor's office, because then you can hold the auditor's office and that person accountable for making sure that the right amount of money has been budgeted for health insurance. But they add a new position, we've added to HR. Part of why you're talking about adding a position to the auditor's office is actually not because payroll didn't do their job, it's because of HR not doing their job. So I don't want to get, I don't want to get any he's.
Alright, alright.
I don't want to get any he's said, she's said, we had Joey.
I can't remember.
We had Joey blaming payroll, so, you know. We had Joey blaming payroll, so I just.
I didn't blame payroll.
Yeah, you said there were mistakes in payroll.
Stop, so. Now, you said.
That's what Joey said. That's what she said.
Continue.
Mr. President?
Mr.?
I think would be appropriate at my last meeting that the auditor's former chief deputy who's sitting in the office of security have to step up and remove him. You didn't see Mr. Yagelski come in?
Bones going old.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I can, I think one of the reasons for this position to be created is so that we can address some of the problems that Commissioner Grammer Rosa has talked about. This would be basically and predominantly for the health insurance, but I can see that it would eventually include all the insurance so that we would have a handle on everything. But right now, we can't pinpoint why we were overdrawn. We can't, we can't understand and this goes, the, our county financial advisor couldn't even come up with a reason that we were overdrawn. So I think that when this commission or committee met, we talked about having someone that can address all of these issues and it's going to need a person who, like Commissioner Grammer Rosa said, can work independently and research a lot of this. They'll have to work with. and uh research a lot of this. They'll have to work with the bank, they'll have to work with the insurance uh providers and they'll also have to work with payroll, the auditors, which is in the auditor's office. The auditor's office, um, and uh the commissioners' office and HR. So it, it's, it's really a job that, that is gonna reach out to different, go ahead.
I agree. So in these meetings, the one thing that was, I think, agreed by everybody is we need one person that's in charge of the insurance that we can go to for the answers. Because we were in meetings and we were asking the auditor's office payroll for different pieces of it, the treasurer's office for pieces of it, and commissioners' office for pieces of it.
HR.
And, and it was HR, and it was hard to bring it all together. And that person's doing this, this person's doing that, and there was no the colla, let's, I'll just say it this way, it's nice, the collaboration wasn't as good as it could be.
Correct.
That, that, I mean, between everybody, not one to blame for anything, it just didn't, what we had doesn't work. So, and, and we need to bring in one person. And the other thing that the State Board of Accounts cited us for, not the council, but I believe, I don't know, if it was the auditor's office or what, that UMR, right now, there's nobody overseeing the payments going to them. They come in and take the money out, there's nobody overseeing it. This person can take care of that also. So this is great. I, I agree with, um, I think if we're gonna start the position, we started at comment five and then see where it goes, see what happens since it's a new position, uh, that would be my recommendation if the council was so.
Yeah, Mister Kiel. I guess, uh, I'm not necessarily opposed or in favor of this yet. I feel like I'd like to hear more information about it, but I, I think this is just one piece of solving the insurance problem. Um, there's gonna probably need to be additional reporting. I think the insurance committee should be rethought. Um, and, but I think most importantly, I, I like, we have two incoming councilmen that I think should be engaged in these discussions as well. I don't think there's any reason that we're in any huge hurry to get this passed tonight. Um, would you be comfortable with us tabling this to in January when we have new members that can be involved in the process and share their input?
Agreed.
Is that a fair thing?
I agree.
That's, that's not up to us, that's up to you, so.
Yeah, you guys would have to.
He's, he's asking if that would work for you if it was tabled and done in January.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're not, we don't have a designated person for the position. It's not like we, you know, this would start the process and then we would actually start looking for an individual for that spot. So we don't even have somebody designated to just start day one and, and go into that position. But at some point, we have to start looking at it. I mean, at some point, we can't keep on kicking the can.
I agree. I agree. I agree.
You know, down the road because every, every so often it pops up here, you know, and I've heard complaints from other department heads and they say, oh my God, you know, our, our, is, they just put me on the agenda. Well, I mean, here I am, I'm not, you know, we all get put on the agenda because these accounts are overdrawn and we necessarily don't always have the information of why we're on the agenda, but we get put on the agenda because we're, we have a shortfall. And it never really comes out whether the short, shortfall is because we are pulling the money out of the wrong accounts and then we had to start shifting money around between accounts because it was being pulled out of wrong accounts or not. We're, the ledgers all show that. We'd like that. We would like that to um, to be corrected. I mean, we're going in, we're going into a new year with new people in the auditor's office. We, I believe that we can all work together and it's gonna be cohesive if we can just find somebody that can take that position. If you start them out with a five and then you give them six months or a period of time where they start proving themselves and they start working more and more independent.
It has to be one year. It has to be one year before anything can change, just a.
Or whatever it would take, but I mean, at some point, we want that person to be independent. I mean, we would still, the commissioner's office would still be taking in the payments. We would still be making deposit, putting it in the accounts and everything, but I think that we would have a good collaboration to figure out exactly where this money is going to.
Adam?
I think in the last year, we put a lot of horsepower into behind insurance and trying to solve some of these issues, you know, when you start talking about moving money around in order to make everything balance. One thing that I've seen work time over time is have a single point accountability, right? Have a single person that's in charge of monitoring and understanding. They have, may have to pull on other resources in order to solve the problem. But to be able to see what's going on day to day, week to week is probably the best route to go. And it's kind of why I'm in support of this position, but maybe the thought process of where do we go in terms of pushing it a month?
Mister President. Argument?
Um, Mr. President. So that we're not throwing blame on the insurance department alone, we all have a report in our hands tonight sitting here at that table. As of today, there are, I'm sorry, as of twelve twenty-four, and probably at least today, there are thirty-two accounts that are in negative balances. So it's not like this is one account is completely different from everybody else. They range from a hundred and four thousand down to fifteen dollars, but they're negative. How many times have we heard, you can't run an account negative, you can't run an account negative. We have heard that, I've heard it for twelve years. And we get a sheet like this at every meeting that we have dozens of accounts in the negative.
Mister.
So this is a huge account in the amount of money involved with insurance. That's why I would agree with the Councilman Keel that we defer this. Mister Presley, Mister Kessler are gonna have to live with this decision instead of Mister Rosenbaum and I. And I would make a motion that we table this to the meeting in genuine.
Can, can we, a few people speak first? Slowly.
My motion goes on. You gonna hold on to it or you wanna, you know, Earl, you wanna go with that motion right now?
Well, there's no second.
I'm ready to second it, but I don't wanna stifle any debate about either.
Mister Kiel.
So in the years of going through the budgets and processing, I know that in the past, and this is not to blame anybody currently, the commissioners have pretty much ruled and roost on insurance, so it's not, they have not included the council in the past and we've tried to get committees or so and so. But something that's happened recently, and no matter how we look at it, insurance as we know it is a thing of the past. It's gonna be just, we're built for whatever, we get lucky if they don't cancel us. What we know right now currently is that we, we flood the place, we flood the place, we flood the place and so on and so forth. Good luck to whatever the insurance is gonna be in our, in our future, because we don't know what that future's gonna be in health and as we know, we get these liability claims and, and everything else. Hopefully, we all decide that we're gonna become all one group here and that we're going to attack this as a group and find out what, what our future will be, will be, because I don't know what that will be and none of us will. So hopefully that will be it, and with that, we're all gonna be a team instead of individuals. And with that, I, I wish us all the best this new year on what we're gonna do and how we're going to attack it. And not just this one person we're talking about, the team attacks it as that, as that to be. I agree, thanks, thanks.
Were you gonna say something?
I'd like to.
Go ahead, and I'm gonna say something, then we'll get.
Okay. Um, very simply, this came out of a committee of other people who is not involved with that committee. And when the idea was that this is a potential solution to the problem that I have been witnessing and dealing with while being on the insurance committee and also dealing with it when we tried to even hire somebody to get numbers and we couldn't even get that a hundred percent. Um, this was the solution to work on it in-house, have somebody with a lot of independence and somebody that we need that has a lot of experience, possibly with LOAIS systems and possibly with insurance. I mean, that's what we're calling for. This is not something that needed to be discussed with the current auditor. This is something going forward. It came from discussion from his, from his office. I'm grateful for that part of it. And, you know, I'm not gonna go back and forth on things about what I've been allowed to see, what I have not been copied on for year-end procedures, not go in there with the comments, so we're just gonna leave it. Simple, that this came out of somewhere else, it's a great idea. And if you wanna push it to next, next meeting, push it to the next meeting, that's fine. But let's try and find the solution, let's try and find ways to solve our problems. And, and, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, Randy, real quick, 'cause I'm gonna say one thing real quick. And this is to follow up with what Earl Cunningham said about all the accounts that we have that have been ran negative. I mean, not only do we have accounts that have been ran negative, we have accounts that are out there, especially, and I can't speak for any of the other departments, but I can speak for our department. We have accounts that say, we have small amounts of money laying all over the place in these accounts and it says, do not spend, do not use. We can't take the money out of there, we can't transfer it into anywhere else. And I'm, you know, besides getting these ones current and getting them out of the negative, we have a lot of little accounts that we're gonna have to clean up. So I think coming into the new year, we all have a lot of work cut out for us. On top of that, I mean, with this position, this is, this is going to help everyone from HR to, to the auditor, to us, to the council, to the commission, for everyone to try to figure out where we have these funds and where they're going to. Adam sat with us and you were part of the discussion on bringing in the new person. You discussed with us and, and we talked about where we wanted that position to go. I'm happy that you're entertaining the idea of a five and if it takes a year to train that individual, at some point, I don't wanna get stopped because she doesn't get paid properly or he doesn't get paid properly, because we don't really even know who we're gonna hire. That they're not gonna take on more work because I really do believe that this job can evolve to someone doing it and really understanding. Right now, the way you've got it, payroll does not, and again, respect to the payroll because, because they are trying to get our payroll up. They're trying to get everyone paid on time and trying to make sure that they're doing all the right deductions and everything else. It's unfair to them to figure out like how much money is coming in and what should be going out. It's unfair to HR because they are actually working on our new hirees, trying to make sure that, that all the employee, they take care of all the employee complaints. They take care of so many other things that we don't even think about. We think that, you know, a lot of us will sit at home and say, well, you know what, they do the new hirees and once they do the new hirees, they're sitting around doing nothing. That's not true. You know, they're taking care of the retirees. There's a lot of work in that office and I just, I'm grateful that you guys are considering this position.
Yeah, but really, really quick, you mentioned a person. We have there begged her to hire, hire a part-time person. How many months did we ask for HR?
Oh, they actually have, no, but they do have a.
No, because she needs help, she didn't use it.
She does have a part-timer in there though.
No, but she was months and months without hiring her.
Okay, let's, let's, let's make sure you understand. Let's keep it, I know, let's keep it, let's keep it simple.
I was simple. Five months she didn't hire me, okay.
Just making sure you understand, Randy. Is there anything else?
No.
I just, I just wanna state that this is, in the meetings that were brought together over the insurance this last year and trying to sort things out from the beginning of the year when it was overdrawn to the end, the one thing that kept coming out is one person to oversee everything. If, if it's the council's decision to hold it over to the first of the year, I'm absolutely fine with that, but the thing is, is that I would hope that we make this a priority first of the year because kicking this can down the road is just gonna let it, it's gonna fester this next year again and we need to get a handle on this as soon as possible. And it doesn't.
I modify my motion.
And it, and it also, one second, then modify. It also doesn't mean that other, this is the answer to everything with the insurance. By no means is this saying that we just hire this person and we just all wash our hands and walk away. There's other things that need to be done. Mister Cunningham.
Also be the first item on the agenda in genuine.
That's your motion, second.
The very first?
Second, second, after the reorganization, second.
Right.
Second, motion by Mister Cunningham, second by Mister Gelski. That should scare everybody that those two are making motions, second. Any other questions or comments on it? Is everybody good with that?
Not, not that we'll have a say on this, but I just wanna be clear and do my duty. Is he saying, are you saying that it's on the agenda of the reorganization?
Of the reorganization committee? He's saying in the regular meeting. Yep. All in favor say aye.
Tabled it.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes, correct?
I'm just the ayes, yeah.
Ayes. It's moved, it'd be on our gen, it's off of tonight's, on the first item of the regular meeting in January. Just so everybody understand. And everybody voted in favor of that. Cause some miles didn't move, I don't want there to be a.
No.
Aye, 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 aye.
I made sure I said aye.
I know. I was looking at, I wasn't even looking at you.
Sir.
I hope the two guys in the back are paying attention.
Sure. Thank you.
Look at those nervous laughs.
Next item is consider additional pay for twenty twenty-five for Planner Mitch Bishop from Cume Bridge Fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. This is to help subsidize the county planner, uh, because he does an awful lot of work on the bridges, uh, securing grants and, and they, they are from NERPC and um, that, um, he spends a lot of time over there, so this is a way to supplement his income.
Motion to approve. I'll second, and I'll also add that a colleague of mine recently shared that the, the city of Portage, um, their planner is paid almost twenty thousand dollars more than what we currently pay our planner, so that may lend itself to justifying this. So that's why I second.
A motion by Mullenhour, second by Keel, is there any other?
Yeah, as you're going with that, make sure you put in the paper that, that their increased population is forty percent more than the Lepore County.
The, the ci- city of Portage, not.
And also their, but also Portage itself is forty percent more than the Lepore County. Just make sure that you also put that in the paper, please.
Is there any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, go ahead.
More not so quickly. Since there were thirty-two accounts, there were negative, there are another thirty-two accounts that have less than one dollar. Just one of what you just said.
Is Cume Bridge, is, is Cume Bridge one of them?
No.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm gonna count it as a seven oh. Moving on. Now we're gonna talk about salary ordinance.
You wanna talk about Franklin Street Bridge?
We're gonna talk about the salary ordinance, that's where we stuck it in.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm, I arrows.
The salary ordinance, they're, um, Mister Gelski.
I'd like to, I know that you talked about extending this into the next meeting. I'd like to add a couple of things that we could, for attorney to add to the salary ordinance.
So my recommendation is that you all pass it and then amend it next year, if you're, if you would consider that.
Pass it and amend it?
And then amend it next year, as soon as we get the rest of the numbers. Because you don't want any issues with your bonus to elected officials and you don't want any issues with.
Could we, could we pass it and amend it so at least we're removing the one person we know is not supposed to be in there? Can we fix that one?
Well, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to change Mister Bishop's salary on there.
That should be.
And there are, there are people coming into the prosecutor's office the first of the year that are not on there and they're gonna be juggling some of the salaries, the state paid position, so my recommendation would be, um, let's, um, if, if you consider passing it today so it's in before the end of the year. And then at the first meeting next year, you'll have all the additional salaries, you'll have the salary grid updated and you can amend it as to the new salary grid.
So, so we got item number two for the agenda next year, right?
Yes, that would be, as long as you have the information.
Right.
Attorney, we concur with that.
Would it be read twice tonight?
Yeah, just, just, just move to suspend the rule.
Senator, I'd make both suspend the rule tonight.
We did, second. Motion by Mister Gelski, second by Mister Cunningham, by Todd Lowly, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
This, this ordinance adopting county of Lepore, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for salary year twenty twenty-five.
President, I have a motion to approve.
Read for a second time by Todd Lowly.
Does that motion to approve include the two salaries that we discussed earlier?
One second.
Okay.
Motion approved, uh, most, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, by title only. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This, this, an ordinance adopting county of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for salary year twenty twenty-five.
President, I have a motion to approve.
Read for a second time by title only.
Does that motion to approve include the two, um, salaries that we discussed earlier? Okay.
Motion approved, uh, most, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Twenty twenty-four dash twelve, as read.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Second, second by Mr. Krunka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. President, I made a motion to, uh, read by title only, twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Motion by title only. Second, by Mr. Krunka. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, by title only.
Okay, so you're gonna amend that as to Mitch's salary and, and the HR. Well, how could you do it after he reads it if he just?
He's reading by title only.
Right, then we're gonna amend it before we vote.
He has to read it first. Unless we do it differently.
Second time by title only, that's right. Does it need to be the other way?
No, he's gonna do a motion for by title only. Or made a motion by title only.
Correct. That's all we got. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
An ordinance adopting county of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for salary year twenty twenty-five.
Keel, you wanna make the amendments?
Uh, motion to approve with the amendment of, uh, the inclusion of the twenty thousand dollar increase to Mr. Bishop, the county planner's salary. Anything else that I need to include?
Day, day charge.
Inter- intersection already, yes.
Oh, and then, can I make a motion to remove the?
I would leave it.
Anthony Price who retired, that's still in there? Just go ahead and take him out. It's less stuff we gotta do next year.
Well, well, I would recommend no because that money is still gonna have to be allocated to other.
For the record, our assistant is included in the current.
With the current dollar amount?
Yes. Mister President, just for the record, if I may, sir, um, every, every department reviewed these and sent approval that they were okay or made changes to the honor's office. We can't catch everything all the time.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a couple of comments that doesn't, I won't reflect to this, but it'll go for next year. One of the, uh, couple of things that we had brought up, we talked about here, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, department heads, uh, when a department head, this has nothing to do with anybody working in any department, just, we've had some issues with this. But an apartment head hires somebody and that department head, uh, hires it, the person's not brought, brought into the county. That person can be brought in after the four years or eight years if that person's here. That person doesn't go through employment, doesn't go through any of that. That person's just brought in through that process. After that period of time, the person, uh, can go to another department head and that's fine, but after that period of time's over with, then that person's no longer employed from LaPorte County. What, what, what you need to do is we need to make specifics and put that into writing so that after that point, our regular employees are allowed to bid on a job that comes open. If our regular employees don't want it, then that department head could bid like a new employee could be. We just gotta make sure that we, that we put this into some language that will come into that, it will come, it will come into that and that's what I like. You start looking at for January.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
We, we need to update the employment manual and that'll be a part of the employment manual.
In the fact, and in the same token, if an individual's been working for the county for fifteen to twenty years and they're asked to take a supervisor's job or department head job, when that person, if, if something changes because of an election and that person's no longer gonna be a department head, that person should have an ability to go back in employment in there if they came from there. Now, if they came from the outside, then the, the, they have no.
We have to straighten.
They have no ownership of that position, but just because, just because a, a, a person that's been here for fifteen years decides to take a department head job, they're not forfeiting all rights to employment if that doesn't work out. Not everybody's cut out to be a supervisor and they agree to take on that responsibility. And if it doesn't work out, then sometimes they're just let go and, and that, they should be able to go back into. Now, if there's an issue, a discipline issue or something like that, that, that's a whole nother issue. That's not what we're talking about.
Questions, we need to just redefine those things up. They haven't been done for a couple of years. The third thing is, and we need to put this in writing, that if we bring a person on a grant, we need to put that specifically that a person will sign that and it's appointed type thing. They were brought in as a grant. If that grant does dry up, their job does go away with that job and that has to be written down specifically. And we've, we've always done it verbally when they come to our, come up in front of us, but we need to put that down in language that goes that, that if the grant dies out, their job also goes away with that. That's something we need to go with employment, that HR presents that paper with, with that, so.
Unless, unless that department finds other funding for it or.
More funding or whatever, right, so those things need to be cleared up for, for some.
And adding to the list of problems, uh, piggybacking off of Councilman Novak's comments, um, there's also the issue of some departments, the difference between the department head and the chief deputy is not very substantial or in some cases, there's even employees that are making nearly as much or more than the department head, which creates kind of disincentive for some people to pursue uh, moving into that managerial role. So we probably need to straighten that out at some point too.
That's why because people put a lot of years in that. But that's not because we put it that way originally, just because of seniority department.
But as noted, we have been making adjustments.
We have been working on.
Trying to catch. And yes, you're right, there are definitely some that will.
The other thing, and I'll, I'll share this with you and then we'll move on, is the, uh, today during the agenda meeting, the finance meeting, whatever it was, one of the things that, um, I brought up and I'm, I'm sure everybody agrees. But this next year, we need to start looking at the number of employees in the county. Nobody, nobody, we're not saying anybody's gonna get laid off. We're not gonna do anything like that, but when, when a vacancy occurs, we're gonna, we need to, we need to get some kind of a study, something to look at which departments that we can actually start if eliminate employees, if we're gonna do this, um, time management system. Maybe that's gonna free up somebody and we can, and have some savings there. But the thing is, is, in, in the main thing that pushes this is, one, the condition of our budget, two, the condition of our insurance, because we've got, um, a ton of money that we're spending on insurance, so, um, this, in the next couple of years, there's gonna be a lot more scrutinizing of departments and possibly, uh, I know the auditor, not the auditor, but the assessor and I think the treasurer still might share an employee back and forth because they have different busy seasons and, and we need to do more of that, such as in the clerk's office. I mean, they've got several different offices with the different courts and if somebody's off, like, maybe somebody can move around, do something like that, so. But there's gonna be a little bit more scrutinizing, but we're gonna need some kind of feasibility study on efficiency in some of these offices, cuz I, I, nobody wants to do anything blind and, because I, I don't know what is best for all these offices, cuz I'm gonna spend the time in there, but. No sense. We have a motion. Is there a second on, was there a motion second?
Yeah, I was second. You ready to call the vote?
You, who, who was it the seconded? I made a motion.
He made the motion. Nobody seconded on this one.
Second.
No, no.
I must have finished, yeah.
Yeah, we only made one minute.
Mitch is back.
Mitch is paying the HR.
So second by Krunka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That was, that's the second reading passed. Done. Alright, now we're moving on to the consider funding of the Franklin Street Bridge. This would obviously be a motion of support for the twenty twenty-five rehabilitation, uh, they're estimating it at one point three two four. President, motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Sure any questions or comments? Comment.
People would be retiring to do this, but the idea of all their past successes, and I don't wanna do that this evening. Well, Andy, is at the podium, I would like to think that, uh, if no one remembers anything else that at the time when we were almost going out for bid and gonna close the Franklin Street Bridge for multiple months during the summer, that I came forward having confidence in you council members that would back me. I was at a commissioners meeting and, and, uh, had it not been for Connie Grammerosa in the hallway, I said, you're a former commissioner, what would you think if I said this? She said, I would listen. I came in, made a proposal, Mr. Rosensky rejected it outright cuz he wanted to put Stables and I and, uh, hey, on a bridge committee and bid everything out. That would've taken a year, would've taken us, uh, would've cost us more money in the long run and we would've had the bridge closed in the summer. You guys that were here with me at that time voted unanimously that we would accept the responsibility. If there was anything wrong with the state board of account report, we would take the responsibility. And I wanna thank Andy and, and his team, Larry and Scott as well and secretary, uh, these are LaPorte County guys who believe in what excellence is. It's not a matter of, think about what we just went through with a, a recent flooding. When they get up there, they find out that there were corners cut on the construction that they've gotta break into walls to get access to pipes. I would much prefer to have somebody that's vested in their county, like these three guys and Andy in particular, to do the job right in the first place and are available twenty-four seven, seven days a week, so you're gonna get to an answer. I, I like to refer to this as the thinking like I would think if my furnace went out. I don't call eight or ten guys and bid a job to have my furnace repaired. I'm gonna call the guy that I already trust to put the furnace in first. Now, if I'm gonna have to replace a furnace, maybe I'm gonna get a couple quotes. But sometimes we get so hung up with this, like, these guys are stealing from us. You know, we see this contract, what, four hundred thousand, this is going to a outside vendor, correct?
Yeah, there's about, a little, about a million dollars actually that's going to outside vendors.
And he's the one that's responsible enough to know enough about the bridge to select an outside vendor. I think we have to keep that in mind. I'm gonna be gone, but I appreciate the fact that you guys, when it, when pressure was on and the bridge was about to be closed, you stepped up and, uh, that's the only thing I'm gonna say about, hopefully at my funeral, somebody remembers.
Hopefully it's not.
So bringing up bridges at your funeral, that's, it's just, yeah, this was bid out though, wasn't it? There was a bidding process for this. There just wasn't anyone else that bid on it.
So we had two public advertisements, that's correct. The first advertisement cycle, there was one incomplete bid that was not a complete bid so that I noticed again and in that notice, I stated that I was the shareholder of both firms, Marcus Electric and LaPorte County Project Management and in this letting, I would be bidding to actually perform the work. And then if someone else bid to perform the work and I was unsuccessful in that, that I would fall back to my project management role that the commissioners hired me for the first go around. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
And that is a motion of support, by the way, cuz it was not advertised.
Is that a real seven zero?
Sorry, that was a, I'm gonna call it seven zero. Speak now or. No, sit down. Alright, give me a second to figure out where. Five went down to the bottom. We're going to appropriations, transfers and requests. LaPorte County Community Corrections requesting to transfer from lit public safety to a lease agreement for field officer in the amount of twenty-three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Second, motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Krunk. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next one is Superior Four. This is for, they're requesting a new appropriation for court reporter pay. They had a court reporter that left. The new court reporter was already a current employee of the county in a different place and, um, had more seniority, so they're, they came up eight hundred and twenty-one dollars short at the end of the year and we just need to make that whole.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat. Second, second by Mr. Krunka. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
LaPorte County Superior Three requesting additional appropriation from the different ones. This is for travel. I've spoke with Judge Thorne. This goes all the way back to, uh, the request actually came in back in October, I think, and it missed some meetings. Um, this is, uh, and I'm not quite sure. This is, as far as I can remember, this is the first time we've had appropriate travel coverage for a judge, but. Um, there's funds to cover that, but evidently.
President, did this go in front of the commissioners or just?
This did. Correct? The travel expense for Judge Thorne, that went before you guys? And there's no money left in your travel? This was, this is from October. This was a long time before, this bill was generated a long time before that one. I'm saying, I think it did, I think there was some, could turn around the background?
We, we may have to just, I'll look at it tomorrow, but, but the reality is, I know that just recently since we sent a lot of the newly elected and we hadn't planned for it, um, that account might be.
It might be over, it might be zeroed out now, but that, like I said, what, speaking with Judge Thorne, this got turned in in October and I believe there was a, a medical reason, somebody wasn't there that, so something got missed for the agenda and.
Uh, according to what I see here, as of the twenty-fourth, there was five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents left in their mileage account.
From what it's worth, uh, the new official training may not need to come out of your travel budget. I think there's a statute that allows it to come from somewhere else.
So if it's a state called meeting, if it's a state called meeting, it can come out of the recorder's perpetual fund. That's for the elected officials.
No, I disagree with you, but I, I don't ever remember courts coming to us for travel, so I, there's something doesn't make sense here. Whatever, I'm not blaming you, Mr. Novak, I'm sorry.
I, I, I asked the same question. I don't know the, I don't know the answer. So.
Mister President, I would point out that, uh, it's December thirtieth and we're very close to the end of the year, obviously. But in the twelve years I've sat on the console, I've never seen courts coming in asking for three hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars. These guys have some authority to spend money and for this to be happening, all this, they look at court, court, court. Additional appropriations, Mr. Yagowski, you've never seen anything like it. You've been here twenty years.
Is this one of those situations where there was just kind of assumed that the judges can already be paid and so that's why it wasn't appropriated?
This was a, this was his own personal training. This is his own. This isn't somebody in his court, he's asking for funds.
President, I don't agree that, I mean, I, I don't remember a budget meeting that we have that would appropriate money for travel. I just something.
This, i- i- if, if I'm not mistaken, what you do with that paper you just had?
I could be wrong.
The conversation, the conversation I had with him, it says, I wish advise that our travel account three zero zero three allocated for two thousand dollars per year, which we have a balance of minus.
No, that's the case and they wouldn't have, that's, that's the case, they wouldn't want to the commissioners.
They're overdrawn.
Four hundred fifty-one dollars.
But they don't normally go to you for like permission to spend, so it's just like it's permission for them to go do the travel, so they don't maybe know what the cost.
Can you talk to the deputy, chief deputy could resolve this very quickly if you ask her a question, she's on the phone.
Well, it couldn't be resolved before. I don't know how we're gonna resolve it now.
Yes, is this okay, sir?
Five hundred dollars. The five hundred dollars Randy emailed me about personally, asked me what it was and then said, we've never done that before. Why do we need it? In the packet, there is the letter from Superior Three telling what it's for. They lived before the commissioners in, I think, November, but they never got the information to us, so I don't know how it can't be resolved with all of that information.
This is, my question was, is this, is this something that has to be done by the end of the year or can it wait till next year to get a reimbursement? But I spoke with Judge Thorne and Judge Thorne.
I mean, if they don't want to approve it today, that's up to them. I, I, I know.
But there wouldn't be a way to correct this afterwards. I mean, this is, we're about to close out twenty twenty-four, so.
Right.
So I just, I've got Diane on the, on the line and she says, we can find the money. So actually, was it paid out?
So they had.
So she paid for it, we have to reimburse him.
It exceeded the twelve hundred dollars.
It's a negative balance right now.
Right. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's fine, I, yeah.
I maybe can do things.
Hold that out of the commissioners.
No. We have, we have to put money, you have to clean it up to be above zero.
Right. And you're not gonna be able to pull it, because I'm not gonna be able to take it out of one of our line items and then transfer it over into the judge's line item.
Uh, I don't think so.
So if it was a bill that was unpaid, then I can figure out how to pay it.
Given the uncertainty about your guys' travel budget already, and just, it's not a lot of money, he's already spent it, it was for legitimate training, I would make a motion to approve it out of Riverboat.
We have a motion and a say. Repeat your motion.
Uh, motion to pay it out or appropriate it out of Riverboat.
It, how about if we put, if it can't be handled out of the commissioners? If the commissioners have five hundred dollars in there, I believe the money is going to Judge Thorne.
They're, they're short of the funds. Their account for travel right now shows five, four hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents over.
Then they can't, yeah.
So if there's an actual bill, and they give us a bill, we can pay it out of our account, we'll find a way to pay it out of one of our accounts.
It looks like it's already been paid, though.
And here's where the problem, because if it ends up being reimbursement, I don't, I don't, I don't have the ability to reimburse.
So, so I guess then the question would be, is how do you pay a? How do you pay a seventeen hundred dollar bill when you only got twelve hundred dollars in your account?
I think what needs.
Would you state your name, please?
Darlene Hale, L'Porte County IT, and this is from working with Rhonda, um, previously on some other bills. I believe probably what needs to happen is a claims adjustment for the four hundred and ninety-five dollars to zero out, and then it would come out of theirs.
Right.
Versus.
Right.
So you say there's a chance?
Thank you for being.
So you okay to amend it?
Yes.
If they can do that?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm ending it. I mean, it's all kind of the same at the end. If we appropriate money into, um, into the judge's fund and they use it, that's one thing. If they don't and it comes out of yours, if they don't use it out of the commissioner's travel budget, they'll just revert to the general fund anyways, so really, it's all the same.
Everything, now you're not taking it out of Riverboat, you're leaving the money in the Riverboat versus taking it out of ours, and instead of.
Oh, that's true.
But we give them, we give them the avenue, if tomorrow it can't be done, then.
Right.
Yeah.
Just to try to leave as much money as you can in the Riverboat.
Are you good with that? She says if you approve it out of the other budget, she'll do it. Are you good with that? All in favor say aye. Those opposed? I'm gonna count it. Final answer. Five, two. All right. Now let's see where we're at.
Circuit Court.
Circuit Court, Superior Three. Circuit Court. Circuit Court needs additional funds. For psychological services and interpreter. These are expenses that they've actually incurred, and they have invoices that they like, I think they have them sitting there waiting. I spoke to, um, of them this last week to make sure that this is something that, um, they absolutely have had done by the end of the year, and they do, so. What's your pleasure on that? These are invoices, like I said, that need to be paid. The interpreters, they've already provided the services.
Make a motion, take it out of opioid unrestricted if it's permitted. Both of them.
It's unrestricted if you have the money, that's fine.
So I thought.
How much is left in there?
There's twenty-one thousand six hundred, according to the sheet that we have, balances at twelve twenty-four. This is only eight thousand dollars and change.
Right, we're gonna get more next year. All right. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions?
A little fact of these, some of these here, I know you more than once told everybody, always those company at the end of this year. I ask my own question.
It's my understanding and. I know, I know it is, but in the, in the courts, in this one, they don't know how many times they're gonna need an interpreter and how many times.
They, they know what skills we're having, these skills have just come, so we, we told everybody, make sure.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Got it. Next one, we're moving on to, all the way to the bottom. The request an additional appropriation for jury pay for services and charges in the amount of eight thousand dollars, and this is out of the jury fund. So this is, we're just approving.
Motion to approve because the jury fund is ninety-six hundred dollars and change.
It's coming out of, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Keel. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none?
No, it was talked about. They missed it definitely.
I think it might have been two months ago.
Yeah, that'd been.
And it's what it is, is we approved, say fifty seventy-five, and then we're, yeah. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Six to one. All right, moving back up to L'Porte County Auditor, request an additional appropriation, Riverboat, for unemployment claims in the amount of eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion to pay out of Riverboat.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka out of Riverboat. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is request an additional improvement, so now we're going into ARP, so. We'll go back up to this, now we're gonna, everything else from here on out is, um, discussion regarding ARP funds, the remaining ARP funds. So we'll go back up to number five, um, the La Crosse Downtown Streetscape in Kinkakee Trail.
I know we talked about the top ten, can we, are we gonna rank when we do these whole things? My turn. Are we gonna rank? Like. Who's getting number one, who's getting number two, who's getting, I, I have a problem who gets paid. Should there be, who's getting, who's the first one getting paid, who's the second getting paid, these top ten, or what are we gonna do here?
Well, cause there's, there's obviously more claims in our.
I know, I, I brought this up the last.
What's the current balance in the ARP?
ARP is two million four hundred thirteen thousand seven sixty. We have a request for more. After we take care of the seven fifty. Two, four, one, three, seven, six, seven. So, I would.
Well, you have, you have a contract with the other municipalities regarding the sewer.
I know, but I have to.
So, well, I mean, it's just so, they need to be in your top ten.
Okay.
So I, I'm just, however you're, you're gonna, yeah.
Actually, cool.
And the two million dollars that's on here is just a stopgap. Should there be remaining funds, somebody does not, uh, pay the money? Just, if somebody doesn't pay the money, doesn't do what they're doing for the obligation, then it can be diverted according to Carl Sender into the health insurance.
Vice President, are you gonna keep bringing total over, sir?
Working on it right now.
All right, so we're working on it. We'll subtract the top ones we have that are under contract, and then we can go from that point.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I understand, I just. Start with the. We're on the same page, Mr. Yagelski. Thanks, sir. Okay, now come back to that one. Yeah.
While you're doing that, Mr. President, while we're doing that, can we go down to IT?
Sure can.
Okay.
We're going down to the last item on the agenda.
I have something to work out there, also, I know that. So, of the hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and six cents, we have some slight adjustments that we need here. So, if you wouldn't mind, can we have Darlene come up and we can walk through your adjustments and I can mark it off on here?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
You're doing the other thing.
So the hundred eighty-one thou, the hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred forty-eight, um, we have talked with the judges. We're going to subtract fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which will be for, the monitors would be outside the courthouse, courtrooms, I'm sorry, courtrooms. And I'll tell you who the next cases are coming up for people for informational purpose.
You're good.
Okay, I'm gonna, as soon as you finish that statement, I'm gonna jump to Darlene and say, Darlene, which one of these quotes is that adjusting?
Infax.
Infax.
And we did have, um, another company, you know, give us a quote on it. They only actually quoted the Michigan City Courthouse versus, um, both.
Okay.
Where Infax does do both, but the other company also had a yearly maintenance fee that I know Judge Stahlbrink was completely against having. Um, he doesn't like those, so, um, that's why, you know, we looked at Infax in a more positive.
And these are under your list, will be displays and lobby and outside of courts.
Yep.
Everybody sees that? So we had a, we had a meeting with our group, Mr. Stables was there, Kenny, Kenny, Kenny was there with the meeting and for our IT meeting. We all agree with most of these things that were on the list here. Um, our next part of it is security for eighteen thousand dollars.
Yes, that would be to upgrade the door system software for the fobs. Um, currently it is very old. And a new PC for them, along with buying storage and getting that programmed for the recording of the current IP cameras, which are all in Michigan City. Um, the Hyler Building, you know, we kept, currently we only have a very small date range of video that we are able to keep. And we want to be able to extend that, so that if, you know, something happens and we need that video from, you know.
So the eighteen staying, correct, Mr. Yagelski?
I'm sorry?
The eighteen thousand is staying.
Eighteen thousand staying, yes.
Okay.
Where's that eighteen thousand at?
That would be the two Pemberton Davis quotes, and then there's a little bit included for some hardware.
All right, so the eighty-five forty from Pemberton Davis along with the.
Forty-one, forty-one fifty-eight plus some hardware.
Okay. It's like this hardware. So the hundred thirteen thousand dollars left, we reduced that down to eighty-five thousand dollars. Of the eighty-five thousand dollars, roughly twenty-five percent is going for, uh, uh, programming for the cameras.
Right, so the internal cameras at the courthouse, um, here in L'Porte, which are very old.
It's gonna be all inside with three outside cameras.
Correct.
So from the eighty-five thousand, we'll take it down to twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. So the bid that, the, the person has is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which you're gonna be working with, the inside cameras and a couple outside cameras.
Correct.
Good evening, Andy Ski at Marcus Electric. So the number I was asked for Pemberton Davis, I'm sorry, I didn't know that offhand coming on my way to the meeting. It was referenced as a twenty-five percent. That number is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars of that goes to Pemberton Davis.
We're reducing the.
No, different job.
For the programming of the cameras, yes.
But we're, we're reducing the big cameras now, so we're down, we're down to eighty-five thousand, so we reduce that down.
Yes, so, yeah, but that, that was the share for Pemberton Davis, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two.
So.
That same company does program the cameras also.
So with that, that, that reduces down that whole amount to twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars from that hundred thirteen thousand dollars, Adam.
Hold on. For twenty-eight thousand for the internal cameras and?
The outside cameras.
Oh.
We had a hu, we had a hundred thirteen thousand dollars, we reduced it down to eighty-five thousand dollars, so it reduced to twenty-eight thousand dollars from outside cameras.
Correct.
So I said, again, that contract of eighty-five thousand, roughly was twenty-five percent, was twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty, so it's the bid for sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's for inside camera wiring and three cameras outside.
So the one eighty-one, two forty-eight is reduced to, if you take twenty-eight thousand minus one eighty-one, two fifty.
You got that really quick, you had that, uh, marking it up.
Minus twenty-one thousand, what?
Tw- tw- one eight, twenty-one, twenty-eight thousand minus one eighty-one, two fifty.
Yeah.
One eight, what?
Three, it was a hundred and sixty, two fifty.
Okay, then minus fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty. That's what the judges are gonna pay for.
One ten.
Hundred ten thousand.
Okay.
So not to exceed one ten, that'll cover it?
It should cover the internal cameras, the upgrade of the door system.
And the DB, the.
The additional storage and.
Three cameras outside.
The three cameras outside.
All right, any questions? We'll put that on the list.
Well, adjust the list, right, yeah.
Any question?
I'm good.
Nope, we're good. I'll put that out as a motion.
Motion to move forward with the L'Porte County IT at a hundred and ten thousand dollars, the last item on the agenda.
I should, I should leave that alone, that's, that's gonna be included, if it might, if we have enough money, so let, let's just leave that price. That'll go on your.
On the list, my tally.
I can't.
Put it on your tally, all right.
Thank you.
Ready?
What's the number you got?
Right now, we're still at. We haven't started yet, so we're still at two million four hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, you know.
So.
He just told us that, well, we're gonna round up, we're a hundred ten thousand, not to exceed, but we're not doing a motion on that until later.
Right, aye.
Just trying to repeat everything.
So I'm asking, just what I'm asking is, what are, what are the totals, everything that we have here before us tonight, what is that total?
The total.
I think you have enough ARP money to do everything. The health insurance was an extra catch-all case we needed to use actually. I don't think we have any problem. I guess. You're not using more than two million dollars, that's for sure.
Right now, we're at.
So you're fine.
Everything on here, not including the two million dollars? That one eight seven two.
Yep, that's what I got.
Yep. That's a raise, is it? That was a great. It was within the raises.
With the raise.
That's everything that.
Say raise, you mean bonus?
Bonus. Yeah. The most. So, one thing. Mr. Keel's been. He's already approved, I guess.
True. Real quick question, the Hannah sidewalks, the Hannah sidewalk was not, it's, well, it's, it's on, that's on here. But if we go back to, if we go back to, uh.
It's actually the Hannah Park now.
Correct, but the La Crosse Streetscape was a motion of support at the time, if I'm not mistaken. And, and the, but the Kinkakee Trail, I thought we appropriated.
Yeah, we did, two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. But did we appropriate the La Crosse?
We did not, because that was, that was a motion support.
Seventy-five.
Yeah. So I don't think we need an appropriation at this meeting, because it's obviously not getting paid on the next day, um, so it could be appropriated next year, but it's more that we're obligated.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be added.
Yeah.
All right, and then you'll give us a better idea of that it's gonna.
Yeah, um, I talked with them, they're on, they're on board full.
Well, so I, but, but so today's the thirtieth, we don't have a, we don't. A lot of ARP.
Well, you don't have an agreement.
Yeah, I basically took your template for the, uh, Grand Kinkakee Trail.
Okay.
And just changed a few wherefor and updated the numbers, so I'll share that with you.
Okay.
So it's ready to go.
And you have the project actually attached to it?
Like a description of it, yeah.
Project numbers, yeah. Okay, great, then, thank you.
If I'm at, makes one seventy-five?
Yeah, one seventy-five.
So that comes out to two million forty-seven thousand, is what I've got. Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
So, as I make this motion, I'll use you as example. So I'm gonna make a motion, because we're slightly over which we wanted to be, I'll make a motion that we adopt all the ARP funds for twenty twenty-four, for twenty twenty-five.
One speed.
I think the motions you should do, Sprey, that they are obligated, right? Because I don't know that you're. I obligate all the twenty twenty-four ARP funds for twenty twenty-five.
Sure, that's two hundred.
Asking?
So.
Yeah, three, yeah, okay, so I, that's what I'm asking, so I obligate the twenty twenty-four ARP funds for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Just to clarify, this is gonna take care of the item on the, the auditors for the bonuses, the, for the twenty twenty-five bonuses. The, um, the La Crosse Streetscape, the Kinkakee Trail, I believe has already been allocated. Kinkakee Trail.
It was on the prior list, the two hundred thousand dollars for the Kinkakee.
I think it was already.
And we have an signed agreement, so.
So we don't have to do anything with that. Um, the Hannah sidewalks, the Wanata Sewer Projects, the Kingford Heights Sewer Projects. The four thousand dollars for the Civil Air Patrol at the L'Porte Hospital, L'Porte Airport.
Yes.
And a hundred and ten thousand dollars for IT.
Um, you need to decide, um, are you appropriating these so that, so that they can then be encumbered at the end of the year? So you don't have to reappropriate next year, or are you simply doing a formality here of obligating, which are you doing?
So both? So the, the, the. I don't believe the La Crosse Streetscape was advertised.
Hasn't been appropriated, this would just be like an.
Correct, it's all that one. Correct, fullback one. So. So can the motion include anything that was advertised is appropriated, those that aren't will, they're obligations.
It, it might be easiest actually to not appropriate it, just putting this out there because all of these are gonna, gonna have to be encumbered, it's just gonna make a bunch of paperwork. Do you do it in January?
We were told when we first got these funds that we had to this year appropriate.
We obligate them. Right?
It's your. Correct, that's why, so.
There's a slight difference.
Twenty five for twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
We're, I'm only doing what I was told to do back in the day, so if you get, you wanna use different terminology that we were told, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure everybody understands that it's gonna include all the items that are left on our.
Including the reversal.
Agenda.
Including the reversal.
Including the reversal in there, so we can just knock it all out in one.
We follow the rules, we did what the commissioners put the list for us, we did.
What would you like us to do, your attorney?
You wanting to change it?
This is really confusing. So can we um?
If we, if we appro, if we advertised the appropriations.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be paying, some of those under the contract, you're paying, you're paying within thirty days. Others, you're not paying until you get an invoice like Hannah. Uh, you, you know what I mean, so um.
But once, once they're done, they're done.
Why don't you ask the next auditor if he has a problem with appropriating these as, as a means of keeping track of them, it's just a matter of uh encumbering, it's, it's a matter of record keeping, it's really.
I think we have to pay something in the next thirty days, I think we need to appropriate it.
Right, so like Kingsford Heights and Wanata, I mean, those projects are, you know, being done, were they published? I don't have the published.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're.
Yeah, so those you definitely want to appropriate. Uh, the Hannah, you're not gonna pay until you get the bills when they start the.
Right.
When they start the process.
So we should break this.
The um.
So, so then the Civil Air, we can go ahead and pay.
I, I don't know, right, so I, I don't know that you added or home or bound, I don't know that it was on a prior list for them. So you're gonna wanna make sure that you appropriate that tonight because their project has started.
But I, it was, it was on a motion, it was already earmarked, it was a motion of support.
It, it was, it was probably obligated back when cuz we had that initial agreement. But that's gonna have to be something that'll either have to be appropriated at the beginning of the year.
Right, because it wasn't entered.
Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Dean Martino, can we have these people obligate this thing for next year, they can, they can ask for it for January for the.
No, everything has to be done tonight.
We do it tonight.
Obligation.
We obligated, they can, they can ask.
Appropriate, they can appropriate it next year.
Yeah.
But, but the raises, we don't, we need to get that off the table.
Yes, the raises off the table too.
Is the IT, you got time, or you need it?
I can do it tonight.
Do you got time?
You can just.
So the only two, so the, yeah. The only two things that I see are the uh, the Wanata Sewer Project, the Kingford Heights Sewer Project, there's the um, and the raises for the uh bonuses.
And she'll do the IT tonight cuz she has the bills for it, and she'll just request it anyway.
Okay, and IT, that's why.
It'll be encumbered.
She didn't understand what you're saying. We're good. So we got that, somebody writing this down?
Not I.
Every dollar that we do not obligate this evening is not to be spent.
It's, it's obligated in the health insurance.
Correct.
Correct.
We're not leaving one dollar on the table.
Right.
We're gonna hold on day one.
So.
Federal government.
So the, the items that we're going to approve to be appropriated tonight is the six fifty for the bonuses, the five hundred thousand and the five hundred thousand for the Wanata and the Kingford Heights projects. Is that, and then the IT, a hundred and ten thousand for IT. Everybody good with that?
And the seven fifty.
Everybody good with that? What?
And seven fifty.
And the seven fifty reversal and the two million dollars for the.
We just, it's obligated.
Okay, so you're, you don't have to do anything, all right. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar reversal, the five hundred thousand, the five hundred thousand, the one ten for IT and the six fifty for bonuses.
We've grown the four thousand.
Is there a motion on that?
In the four thousand?
In the four.
Yeah, but, yeah, said there's. I had the same motion, so everyone's got the second. Like the four thousand, he said.
Was the four thousand published?
Yes.
Okay, so you signed the agreement, it was sent to the Air Force, we haven't got it back yet, but you signed it, so it's at least.
So it's obligated.
So we'll add that.
Motion second.
Motion in a second by Earl, uh, by Mark and Earl. Any other questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is an, the obligation of the remaining items, which would be the two million dollars for group health insurance. The one hundred thousand dollars for Hannah sidewalks. The, the, hang on a second, one more, and then the Lacrosse Streetscape for one seventy five.
I'll make the motion.
Is that, is that?
Let me summarize those again if you would.
So is it, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keel. Uh, the one seventy five for Lacrosse Streetscape, the two million dollars for insurance, not to exceed, obviously. Um, the one hundred thousand dollars for Hannah sidewalks.
Which is really the Hannah Lions Park project.
Right.
Well, it's not the line, it's, it's the.
It's the park project, whatever their community park is.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah.
It's going through the, yeah.
Those are the remaining items, does everybody see it the way I see it? With the record show, everybody agreed with me. Any other, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed? That's it. I think that uh, I don't think we have anything remaining on our agenda.
Well, we have comments.
Best confusion.
This is almost as long a meeting as a.
I know. Uh, as confusing as that was, uh, that completed the spending of all the ARP money, so we'll start with council comments, Mr. O'Naur.
Uh, just wanna say like to everyone that uh, happy uh New Years and uh, wish everybody well and stay healthy and uh, start a new year here and. Thank you.
Happy New Year to everyone, and I'm looking forward to working with our new additions to the council.
I guess I'm third with the, the Happy New Year to everybody, um, and I'm glad that even through the last bit of confusion during this meeting, we managed to get through the ARP money with, you know, some good, sound projects, um, other than just trying to bridge gaps.
Sounds good, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Well, I've got a little bit more to say, so I think you should let somebody else go, and I'll add towards the end.
Mr. Yagowski, nothing? Earl, you wanna go next?
I can go anytime.
You wanna go? Well, the.
Yeah, right now.
I don't want you to say that cuz you wanted us to speak at your funeral, so don't. You know? And if we, and here's what I'm gonna say, if we have. If I get up at your funeral and speak of the Frank Listerie Bridge, Fable never forgive me. Never don't. It's good.
Um, actually, just uh, thank you to everybody, uh, Happy New Year, and thank you. As I said, it wasn't gonna go on. I appreciate the support of the constituents throughout the county, it's uh, it's one thing to represent a district, it's probably a little tougher to represent the entire county, it's a big county. You know, it's a, it's a lot of area and a hundred and ten thousand people. And I uh, I thank the constituents for their confidence.
Mr. Yagowski? Did you have something or no? You good? All right, Mike?
Um, yeah, it's simple, six years on this council, got to work with some very incredible people. Um, and that, not, not just the people in the council, but the people in the county, uh, the employees, um, a tremendous amount of support uh that I've received. Um, I have officially resigned effective tomorrow night at midnight, um, so that I can, uh, as elected to the new county auditor, so I can take over in that office. And uh, with that, and then uh, be able to still support and work with the council, which is kind of incredible, and the new people coming on, couldn't be more proud of uh, the way those things uh have, have uh worked out. Um, so I'm going to just move on real quick. Uh, best wishes to everybody for happy and healthy New Year, thank you.
That's it?
I had written more, but I thought it'd be kinda.
So I just wanna, I'll start off with Happy New Year to everybody and healthy New Year to everybody. And to Mr. Cunningham, who um, who was my business law teacher in high school.
She will speak at his funeral.
So, yeah, so uh, which has gotta be pushing fifty years um ago.